Your card, brother. Your card, brother. Your card.
I saw it down there. Was that at Stevens? Did I see it Stevens today?
Yeah.
Still from the...
What's that thing? You have a good day? Productive? Productive?
Good evening. I call to order the January 17, 2013 Board of Commissioners meeting. First item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. Those who would join us, please.
Please bow. Herein, Father, we thank you for this day that you created for us. Father, we just want to thank you for your many blessings. Father, we ask that you would guide this board of many women that have come to do the business of the city. Father, that their decisions would be in the best interest of the City of Fairview. Father, we ask that you would just guide their decisions. All these things we ask in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
We have a first and a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. We have citizens' comments. Mr. John Cherry, will you please approach the podium? It's hard to say fast. Approach.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm newly elected to the Chamber of Commerce Board and I'm going to be chairing the Business Expo and Job Fair that's coming up March the 19th. And very excited to be working on that. And I've already sent out a lot of emails and talked on business boards and faxed out the fire and registration. So, we're looking forward to that. And it's going to be a couple of people. It'll have to be at the middle school. And this is the first time that the Job Fair and Business Expo has done a joint venture. So, that's going to be pretty exciting. I wanted to put in a plug for the Chamber to be, again, a line item budget into the city's budget. I know that this is something that was done in the past. I think a city manager in the past, maybe a decade ago or so, took it out of the budget. I know that other cities our size have their chambers as part of their budget. You know, the chambers, as you know, promote their cities and go out and try to recruit businesses and promote the businesses that exist. And we have one person on the staff that's here that's two days a week. And a lot of times when businesses are trying to get in touch with the chambers, there's a lot of times when they come to look for that person, they're not here. So, it'd be nice to have... You know, we run a deficit every year and we just simply can't do all the things we want to do, go out and recruit new members. And there's a lot of things we can't do because of the size of the budget. One of the ways, you know, we could do that is recruit more members. And so, it's kind of a catch-22. So, you know, we'd like to ask, as you're considering your budgets this year, if we could request a $25,000 a year item, line item in the budget for the Chamber, we'd really appreciate it. So, that's what I'm asking for. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Appreciate your question.
All right. Thank you.
Next item is the awards and recognitions.
Mayor, there are no staff awards or recognitions tonight.
Any from the board? Item number five is public announcements.
Mayor, just wanted to let everyone know that City Hall will be closed on Monday, January 21st.
I will also make a note that the Economic Task Force will be meeting on Monday, the 21st, at 6:00 p.m. will be reviewing the 2012 goals and accomplishments and looking at 2013 goals and needs. So, anyone who is wanting to be involved in the Economic Development Task Force, it's an open table forum. We invite you out at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. Any other public announcements? Item number six is approval of the minutes, the minutes from the December 20, 2012 Board of Commissioners meeting. First and second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, A, on old business, discuss and/or take action on requesting city attorney to prepare rezoning ordinance on property located at 7355 Overby Road. Mr. LeBorne.
This was a recommendation that came from the planning commission to the Board of Commissioners. When it got to the Board of Commissioners, the recommendation was actually a recommendation for approval of the rezoning. It was seven for the rezoning and two voted against it. That was Vice Mayor Johnson and Commissioner Chairman Hall at the time voted against the rezoning. So, it came to the Board as a recommendation. And when it got to the Board of Commissioners, it died for lack of a motion to ask Larry to prepare the papers. And so, at that point, it don't normally come back to this Board unless the developer asks for it to come back. And the developer has asked for it to come back to you all for your consideration again.
What are the wishes of the board?
We would not be approving the rezoning. We would simply be approving Mary Glenn.
Discuss or take action on requesting city attorney to prepare rezoning ordinance.
Yeah. I move to approve that.
First and second, any discussion?
I would like to see a... Something put on there about the... As long as the water authority signs off on the sewer system. And if that needs to be an amendment, I so move.
I'll second that. Amendment second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Original motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, B, updates on City of Fairview projects. City Manager Height.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over my project list, we've... I sent an email yesterday to the state asking about the Greenway, but I don't think the individual was there. They haven't responded on where we are. We did return the amendment in September of 2012. So, I imagine we should be hearing something back from them fairly soon. The Booty Lake Road project has been put out. They had placed for bid on... I believe it was actually on the 15th, 14th, when it went out on Monday in the newspaper. So, with 22 days, we'll be getting our bids back and opening those and hopefully moving forward on that project.
What was the date? February?
Oh.
February...
Very small print. Very small. Extremely small. Good. Great.
You have my glasses?
I've got them, but it looks like I need magnifying glass. February 5th, 2013.
Is it to be opened February 5th at 2:00 p.m.?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Triangle School, obviously, we have completed the structural part of that. Don has secured an architect to go out and meet with him on next Thursday to discuss the drawings for the electrical and the water, that type of thing, if you want water inside the building, if we want water inside the building. So, that's where we are there. And I think we kind of need to see what direction we want to go there. And we'll just... It's a preliminary discussion with the architect. So, we don't... I believe when I first saw the plat, the layout for the project, it had external bathrooms. I don't remember seeing anything internally, or there was nothing discussed. So, currently, there's no water in the building. So, we'd have to decide if that's something we want to see.
Send an email out inquiring. Does anyone on the board have any comments, one way or the other, as far as direction for interior water on the Triangle School?
Has anybody requested it?
Not to me, no. I don't think...
Well, Dr. Rice had mentioned it at one time. And the only thing that I had questioned was what that would do to the historic registry. And I haven't got a clear understanding if it would affect it in any way. So, before... When you move forward with putting plumbing in the building, I would really want to know how it affected its registry.
Well, and I agree with that. And one of the things that, I mean, once you start doing those kind of changes, I mean, I don't know, they had outhouses. So, you know, we could always do a separate building and not go through the whole putting it in.
The only thing that was stated about the historical is there are restaurants put into old historical homes as exceptions.
Correct.
So, I think that would be the way they would say, is there are some modernization, if that's the right word, exceptions when you're dealing with public buildings. But it still becomes of the Board's understanding of not only expenditures, but completed project. Was that ever what was planned, to be able to put water in that building?
I've never heard it discussed.
Well, I don't think so. But I think one of the decisions we made in moving forward with the improvements in it was it would be a multi-use facility that we could use for several different things, meetings, da-da-da-da-da, conferences, things of this nature. It's going to have to have water.
Well, if the public comes in, we have to provide some means of... To use the restroom. So, but does it... I mean, do we? I mean, we would have to, if public...
There are some public historic buildings that do not have restrooms and do not even have restrooms on the side. There's a historic log cabin that's there at Nashville West. It's open... Well, the building itself is not open, but you can walk around the building, you can look in the windows and things. But there's really no restrooms over there, except, I guess, maybe the police station is there if you need to go to the restroom. I guess you go to the police station. But there, exactly where the log cabin is, there's really nothing there. So, I don't really know. But I do know that in the document that was given to the city for the historic registry that when you are doing any type of work to the building, that you actually had to get that approved by the board that oversees that registry. So, we probably need to get in contact with the person that's in that document. And I haven't seen that document in a while. I don't know where it's at. And Dr. Rice had said he had a copy of the document, but I haven't been able to get a copy from him. But there's some stuff that's in that document that explains how you go about getting approvals for changes and stuff to that building.
Okay. Question. Let's go back. Why are you meeting with an architect?
Because I was told to.
Because of the...
The electrical, the HVAC, and the insulation. And if you want to do plumbing, then you've got to do it all at the same time.
In order to put it out for bid.
And realizing that the HVAC is going to be done by...
Why do we have to put it out to bid if it's a city project? Can't the city hire subcontractors?
If it's over $10,000, you've got to bid it out.
If it's over $10,000?
We'd had a discussion in here to get an architect and to draw up plans and that type of thing. So, that's why we decided...
Do they need to stand plans?
Correct.
Thoughts from the board?
Asking the Vice Mayor, do you don't recall that ever being in the plan?
Not at all. My old drawing at home indicates an outside restroom.
It is.
But in reference to Commissioner Sutton's comment, though, if we do have any hopes of having any sort of auxiliary use for it for the community, you know, if they wanted to have a waiting reception or something to that effect in it, then it would need water inside. So, we kind of limit ourselves if we go with the outside restroom. But there's a difference between just pumping water to it and having a sink or something and still having an outside restroom. You don't necessarily have to have an inside restroom. You could have a facility that had running water to it, but it didn't have a restroom. The restroom can still be a separate building. My concern, quite frankly, is that we've already spent $50,000 on the Triangle School this year. And having just had our workshop on the budget, we look pretty tight in some areas. I'm not sure that what we shouldn't do is defer our next step into the budget cycle for the following year, since we've already... Since none of us really anticipated that us having to spend that $50,000 on the structural part of this, that was kind of something we had to pull out, that we would be better served at this point. And it would... I mean, I don't have any problem with the architect coming out there and giving us some ideas, one way or the other. But I'm not ready to vote, to bid out, to spend more money on the historical village. I think we have other capital improvement projects that the public wants and/or we need in the public safety area that kind of supersede the historic village at this point, because we've already spent $48,000 on it.
We don't have position for taking action on this particular item or under reports. So, you're exactly right if we go there. When are you meeting? Because I say no indoor water, so that'll let you go on with your meeting. Does anybody say anything different, just going to go on with the meeting?
Well, I mean, I do agree that we need to move forward. And there is no money, you know, to spend that. So, if this holds it up in any way from the progress, then let's take it out of the picture. It's always something that if they want to fundraise, or we could do the outside parcel, we can add later. So, that would be my suggestion.
They have raised $34,000.
Yeah. I mean, and that is something, you know, since we're not voting anyway, if Dr. Rice enlightens us in an email or whatever, he can, you know, let us know. But I would say let's not hold up the project and, you know, make forward.
We do have a project workshop set up for the 5th of February. So, we'll discuss it further after Don gets some information.
In lieu of our agenda?
Correct.
How about you finish what you want to share?
Okay. Welcome signs. Obviously, we've almost completed the second one at the Highway 96 Fire Station. The total cost for the materials for the three signs and, at this point, the engineering for the sign, $21,161. If we take out the $8,023, depending on how we want to do that, the actual signs end up being about $4,379.33 per sign. So, less than $4,400. And that's a total of $13,138.
I want to visit right there. And I think everybody thinks we have moved a mountain with the sign on 100. And I think that was the first place of saying we've done it. And I appreciate everybody's hard work. I want to address the 1096. I want the commission to kind of give their thoughts about the changes. I think the consistency is very important, the consistency of the logo on the signs that are different, the consistent, unless you've changed that, the consistency of the colors of the sign, and the consistency of the front and the back. And I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say about it being inconsistent on the two we currently have.
Well, I mean, my opinion is they have to... They need to match. I mean, that's just... And when you're on 96, it's a confusion, is it a welcome to Fairview sign, or is it a sign advertising, you know, the fire hall? So, I mean, in my opinion, but it's up. So, I mean, if somebody would ask me, you know, I would have voiced my opinion. But I think, I mean, y'all can talk. I guess y'all saw a multipurpose, you know, reason to use. But if you want my opinion, I would like to see all of them in a little bit of a slant. And I know we did the reason it was done on Highway 100 that way is there was no choice. But I think we kind of need to stay consistent. But they look good.
Comments from the others?
Well, just to add to that, I did speak with the city manager. And if that is the general consensus of the board, he's already spoken with the gentleman that did the sign. And the fire department thing could be taken off rather easily. It could be matched up. And we talked about putting a fire department sign as the facade of the building. So, whichever way we need to go, if that's what we need to do...
Again, we don't have an action here, but I did want to hear from the board as far as consistency. And I would like to see the consistency of the signs for the benefit of it. We knew what we were doing when we started. We did what we thought we were going to do. It looks good, and they all look the same. I think that's... I think that makes a statement on the city.
I guess...
See it consistent. Yes, sir.
I guess from my point of view, the signs are consistent, because the architecture and the type of lettering, the fact that the letters are a different color, doesn't... That doesn't affect me one way or the other. I can understand the backside of the sign maybe needing to adjust that and put the, you know, "Please come back," or "Drive safely," or whatever we said on the other. You can't really see the one on Highway 100 because of the slant.
What about the logo?
But there's some... We need to figure out some way, because we did replace the fire department sign there that says that was an auxiliary fire hall. And we do have to figure out some way to designate that site for that. But if that requires us to put a separate sign for consistency's sake. But I guess the color on the front side of the sign that says Fairview welcomes, it doesn't really affect me one way or the other. I don't have an opinion about that.
Did you say you were cold blind one time?
No.
No? Okay. I was going to bring that up, but if it's not, I apologize even asking. But when you said that, I thought, well, if you're cold blind, it don't matter.
No, no. I know the difference between green and red.
And I think the consistency that we talked about is just something that we can easily alter. You said you spoke to the sign man, or city manager has addressed it already?
Yeah, he is.
Correct. The logo at the top is something we've also asked the other one to look at, because we felt like with the dead spot up there and all that, it kind of gave us... They would be consistent from sign to sign to sign.
So, all of them will have the little tree logo, which I like?
Which is that, right there behind you.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Enough said.
Are you wanting the one at 96, the color change to match the other one? Or just the fire department off the back?
Fire department off the back and the colors being the same on all three of them? Same rock? Same cat?
It's all the same rock, yeah.
That's all the same, but...
The green letters instead of the burgundy letters.
Well, and the only thing, which I'm not saying move the sign, so don't... I mean, I'm just giving my after opinion, since it's being asked. The only thing I would, you know, it just... It's hard to tell with us taking that spot. It's hard to tell that it's really a welcome to Fairview sign. I mean, you see it, but it's the way it's positioned right in front of the building, replacing an old sign, it, you know, to me, I just...
Has the landscaping been completed on 96?
Not completed, no, ma'am.
Not completed?
We put some trees, some shrubbery in there, but we have not completed it, no. Reason why we put it there, there's gas lines on the other side that the gentleman from the gas company told us he did not know how many or exactly where they were. We originally selected that side where you see the gas meter. We went to the other side of the property, you got trees on the other lot that we don't own or control that would totally block the back. The front, we had to go back that far because of the TDOT right-of-way there is 53 feet from the center, because they anticipate doing a four-lane there at some point. So, we can't put it in. So, that's why... And we're like within about two feet of that. The only thing is it's not angled.
And I'm going to address that. We still do not have a permanent location. We need to discuss that either between now and our project meeting on the 5th. If anyone has input on 100 coming from 8:40 East on 100, that where we can put the sign, we're looking for suggestions.
I put some... We will put some flags kind of out there where we kind of have an idea...
We've got to stay out of the right-of-way.
Right. We've got to stay out of the right-of-way.
We've got to get an easement agreement from the property owner, if we don't own the property.
If we go off our property. Right. Correct.
If we don't have property, which...
We'll put it where the Triangle School, where that property is, just to show you what we were thinking originally until we brought it up recently. So, you have that, and then you can go further and try to figure out a place where we can put it.
Because I've driven and tried to give you suggestions, and it's going to be a little difficult.
It's very tough from that point back down to 40.
You may know someone.
Meeting on the 5th. And that is a Tuesday, right?
It should be on the 5th. It's the 7th, then. I just had the date wrong. It'll be at 6:00.
The 7th.
Whatever the next meeting is, before the meeting, I apologize for the date. I thought it was the 5th.
That's okay. All right. In respect of time, was there other stuff you wanted to share?
Um, no, ma'am.
Comments from the board?
I'm sorry. Evergreen Park, we have started out there, but the rain and everything slowed us down because we couldn't get all the way around. We didn't want to get our trucks trapped, so...
Real quick on that, if you could, on that meeting, bring us what the minimal cost would be for changing that, making it consistent with the other sign?
I'll...
And adding a sign to the side of the building for the fire.
Any other comments from the board on projects? Thank you. Next item on the agenda...
Hope Don had something.
Sorry, Don.
Roadskates had emailed Monique Hazelwood that we were doing a scope change. They've agreed to the scope change. We have received a notice to proceed for the environmental. TDOT's going ahead with the environmental phase right... It's... Don't know exactly when they're going to get that completed, but they've already started that phase for us. And Los and Associates had contacted me yesterday just to get familiar with the project again. And once we get confirmation from TDOT that they're finished with the environmental phase and we can proceed with the design phase, we'll get back in touch with Los and Associates.
Excellent. Any comments from the board? Moving on, new business, A, discuss and/or take action on bill number 2013-1.
It's an ordinance to annex Overby Road, Givens Cut Road, and the existing county road right-of-way into the City of Fairview, Tennessee. All the proposed roadways for annexation lie within the City of Fairview, Tennessee growth boundary. Move for approval.
First and second, discussion?
Mayor, may I interject something before we start? Just in the interest of saving time and giving deference to the new statute in relation to annexations, I'd like to have Mr. LeBorne state for the record for A, B, C, and D if he has made all the notifications that's required in the new statute.
Yes, sir. The county's been notified because they own the roads. Notice has been given to them. Sent the ordinances for the annexation and the ordinances for... Or the resolutions for the public hearings, they were notified. And the property owners, the Ebiata's, have been notified as well.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8B, discuss and/or take action on resolution number 02-13.
Resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the annexation of Overby Road, Givens Cut Road, and the existing county right-of-way into the City of Fairview, Tennessee. All the proposed roadways for the annexation lie within the City of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary. Move for approval.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8C, discuss and/or take action on bill 2013-2.
It's an ordinance to annex certain property located at 7355 Overby Road herein described below and to incorporate same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, belonging to Kathy E. Biata. All the property proposed for annexation lies within the City of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary. Move for approval.
First, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8D, discuss and/or take action on resolution 03-13.
Do I? That one's the ordinance. Do you have it in front of you? I'm missing that one.
The caption's on the agenda.
Okay.
If it is, I'll read it.
It's for the annexation of certain property located at 7355 Overby Road herein described below and to incorporate same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee. All the property proposed for annexation lies within the City of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary. City of Fairview Geological Listing and Assessment Road Map 46, Parcel 44, containing 108.41 acres belonging to Kathy E. Biata. Move for approval.
First, second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, discuss and undertake action on appointment of Board of Zoning Appeals. Director LeVorn.
There was a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals when the board removed Mr. Seaborn from the board. We have one application that was submitted to fill that seat. You had that application before you.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discuss and undertake action on new lease agreement for four new copiers, fax printers, scanners, administration, or administration, fire, police, and park. Ms. Pewett?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in April, I brought this to you, brought this to the board, and we actually did not have the budgeted funds for it, so we deferred it till we could have it budgeted, and it is currently budgeted. Now, I brought it before you again because our police department, their machines, their copier, as well as their fax machine, is currently on the outs. They've been out to fix them, and they're so old they can't be fixed. And the park department apparently has some of the same troubles. We have the police department, the park department, and the fire department. They come up and use our copiers because theirs are so old. I do have Mr. Will Canterbury here with me from RJ Young, and he's here to answer any questions you might have about the actual lease agreement that he's proposed for us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you all here tonight. I brought each of you all a packet if you'd like to take a look at it. A few months back, me and Ms. Pewett began looking at the lease coming up and the issues that were coming up with the machines being older, copiers, much like a lot of different things. An example that I use a lot of times, like an old muscle car. As the machine gets older, it becomes more expensive to maintain. We looked at different devices, different resolutions for those issues or for those problems, and came up with a four-device replacement, being able to answer all the specific needs for those four specific areas, being the administration, the fire station, the police department, and the park. The best part of all that is we were able to do that, from what I gather, under your budget, which is always a plus. But I wanted to keep it just brief. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the devices individually, us as a company, anything that the board would have.
One thing I would want to ask in the Windstream new contract that we're working with, and they are internet and connectivity and press a button and connect to all the buildings and such, how, in your faxes and scannings, that's touching into all of that. Is any of that being redundant, or any of that that needs to be interfaced and thought through with other people? Say Windstream and, I mean, is that something of consideration?
All the devices are network-friendly. They would be networked into your existing mainframe. All of the machines have color scanning as, in addition to black and white scanning, all of them except for one will fax. The need just wasn't established for fax to be out at the park because I believe they have an existing fax machine. All the rest of the devices would have fax, and they would be networked as you see fit.
Comments or wishes of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
First, second, any discussion?
I just have a question. Christopher Crystal, how often do we go over and have to spend, you know, nine cents a month? I mean, our current plan, are we...
We do not go over on our current plan.
Okay.
So we should not, there could be the potential of going over on the color. That will be new, but with 200 copies a month, they should be able to stay under it. Only the park department has it, and that's because they come up and use Don's to make copies for their programs. So only the park department can make color, and it will be set up so that when they print, it's automatically black and white. They'll have to tell it a walk.
Now, 200 copies don't sound like a whole lot in Teresa's world.
Color, only color. Only 200 color, black and whites.
Twelve thousand.
When it comes to Teresa's world, she's...
Yeah, they shouldn't be printing color down there unless absolutely necessary.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Package that you have for us.
Thank you.
Do that, or I can have? I didn't want to cross the yellow line.
So I'm trying to wrap my mind about, and, you know, I understand it's not that much a difference, and you're getting a lot more, so just to state that for everybody's clear, I understand that. But I do, I don't understand, in a building this size, having this many copiers, how many are we going to have? We're going to have one up, replace the one upstairs.
We have two upstairs. We have one on our side and one on Don's side, and then the police department will have their own. And they currently do now. We have all three of those now.
So you're just replacing them.
Their machine doesn't even fax, so they have a total separate fax machine and a total separate printer, and this new machine will take the place of all of those.
Are you trading in or not?
Our old machines? Y'all do that, y'all have a trade, drag and bring it in, don't you?
We have the ability to get rid of them, but those particular devices are so old that they're kind of past their prime.
But would, all right, any, all those in favor? Oh, more discussion, I'm sorry.
Just a little bit, and I may have missed this. Are these wireless?
One is. It was requested that the fire station be wireless capable.
Their current one is also wireless.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, oh, that did request. You forgot to tell you one important thing.
The one important thing, I guess, to throw in is before this particular meeting, I spoke with my manager, and y'all have been a long existing customer of ours, and he agreed to cover the first month's payment in it entirely. So you won't see an invoice for those machines for about 60 days.
And this is a lease?
Mm-hmm.
For to own?
Or just outright lease?
Outright lease, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Pewett.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discuss and undertake action on bill number 2013-03.
It's an ordinance to allow a one-time variance to the city of Fairview, Tennessee Policy and Procedures Manual adopted by ordinance 615 dated April 6, 2006.
Basically, Mayor, and Ms. Crystal can correct me or jump anytime she feels like it, but she was one who brought this to my attention, that when the board passed the COLA, it was to go into effect January the 1st, and in fact was supposed to be paid then, and was, because that was the board's wishes. This is just a house cleaning ordinance because the Policies and Procedures Manual was approved by ordinance, has to be, any changes has to be by ordinance. It has a provision there that says all pay raises, et cetera, et cetera, goes into effect July 1st. And my suggestion was, since the board authorized the payment of the COLA on January 1st, and there's some statutes relating to those things that if they're approved, they have to be paid, that we go back and have this ordinance to allow a one-time variance from the Policies and Procedures Manual, and then when we're having the budget discussions, if the board sees fit to remove that COLA provision in the Policies and Procedures Manual and put it some, this will be January 1st every time, then we'll do that. But this ordinance allows that just a housekeeping measure to get it this year, and then we'll deal with that when we have the budget discussions.
Move to approve.
Second.
First, second, discussion?
Have any of these payments already been made?
Yes, sir. The COLA went into effect the first paycheck, which was January 11th, I'm sorry.
That was on my recommendation, Commissioner Johnson, because there are some state statutes that deal with payments that are due to employees have to be made within 10 days, and the board had already approved it. So I said, well, let's go ahead and approve that and then get this housekeeping measure so that we'll be straight.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H, discuss and undertake action on bill number 2013-04.
It's an ordinance to amend the certain sections of the city of Fairview, Tennessee Policy and Procedures Manual. The city of Fairview, Tennessee Policy and Procedures Manual was adopted by ordinance 615 dated April 6, 2006.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is housekeeping as well. As Larry stated earlier, anytime we make changes, which we've done, we did with the new pay plan, we did away with the incentive pay, and it's still in the handbook, so we need to take that out and reprint that page. And also, we updated and changed, actually changed the vacation plan. You already had approved both of those, and this is just taking care of that so I can reprint these books. We're at a need to get those reprinted and rebound and that type of thing, so we just needed to take care of this to get that legally taken care of.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think I'm working off of an old agenda. You removed, I am... There was something dropped from the original to now. I, is discuss and undertake action on allocating $35,000 from General Reserve to be used on improving the current fire range or building a temporary range. Commissioner Bissell?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to defer that. We did not, due to my illness, we were unable to meet with WADC about the possibility of getting our firing range into by lease or by purchase back from the Water Authority. And so I'm really, don't want to have the discussion until I know what our options are. So if I could defer that and I, to an unspecified meeting based upon, I will put it back on the agenda when we have the meeting with WADC over the next couple of weeks, and we can discuss it then.
Item J, discuss and undertake action on allocating $35,000 from General Reserve to be used on the development of the fire training complex on Deer Ridge Road. Commissioner Bissell?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to discuss that a little bit, and I would ask that Captain Hughes come to the podium to assist me on that. When I was reporting out for the Public Safety Committee meeting, one of the items that I covered was the potential use of Deer Ridge Road property to begin the use of a fire and/or police training complex. And having said that, I ask Chief Cooper, and he turned around and delegated Captain Hughes to go through and to develop, and I believe he has a packet which he will be providing with you, plus we have a overhead for the public, that talks a little bit about if we were able to allocate some money from our unavailable fund to them, how we could begin that process this year in order to build what we will need for the future in terms of a training facility that would be, both have multiple use, would be available to the fire department and would be available for some police use as well. So I'd like to turn it over to Captain Hughes.
Just kind of limited to the first year. ... He's going to limit his comments tonight. Just what we do during the first year, which would be this year and maybe the first part of next fiscal year. So, but at later dates, I hope to invite him back if we move this way, so he can take us through the entire process, because at the seven-year mark, we really have quite a facility for both our fire and police that would put us on the map with our peers.
Part of what I was asked to develop was a plan to start developing a fire training ground. One nice thing about a fire training ground is it can be multiple use between both the fire department and police department. Almost all the facilities have the capability of you being used by both departments, and they could also actually, in some cases, be used by public works for training of their personnel on some of their more specific equipment. The key thing, as everybody knows with training anybody, is you have to train them on their psychomotive skills and get them to develop muscle memory in order to be able to successfully perform their tasks. Next slide, please. I put together a seven-year plan, yet essentially would give us a training ground that should serve the fire department for a 20-year period after its completion. The basis of the 20 years is that point, the initial building we put would have to be inspected to be ensure that it's safe. It does have the potential for lasting into 30 years, if not longer. Next slide, please. I did include some ISO information on it. Currently, we are taking loss of points on ISO credit because we do not have a drill tower, we do not have a fire building or a compostable liquid pit, and we get a reduced credit because we don't have a designated fire ground. We essentially improvise, adapt, and overcome and train where we could find ground to train using public streets and various locations to fulfill the need. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of the Deer Ridge location I was told to develop a plan for. The plan can be superimposed onto any other property, yet it needs to be moved to if this site is determined not to be suitable. Next slide. Currently, we have a seven-acre site with an existing tin building which has a dirt floor, which in the long run can be paved and used for long-term storage for both the police department and the fire department for equipment. Next slide, please. The first-year proposal essentially is to build a concrete pad to allow us to start the construction of a training building and to put in gravel pads to support the weight of the fire trucks to keep them from sinking, because if we tried to just train on the existing ground, we'd spend more than that cost in towing our equipment out of the field. Next slide, please. This would be an example of what we hope to build. It'd be a shipping container training building. It's what the military moved to in place of brick-built sites because they discovered the durability of them, how long they last, the flexibility of them, and yet they're just cheaper than building it out of concrete and stone, similar to what Brentwood and Franklin Training Facilities are built out of. This is an example of it. If you could flip back to the previous slide, please. The advantage we have here is by using the shipping containers, we're purchasing the containers, but at this point, most of the work could be done in-house to convert them into the training facilities.
It's like tricking out the truck.
Essentially, ma'am. Be able to customize it for our specific needs. The intent, the intent would be in the first year to get us to a second story, to be able to give us the ability to ladder, get onto the roof, and train. Next slide, please. The third year essentially, or excuse me, the second year essentially would be paving over what we initially gravelled, or based on the cost, it could be a concrete pad. Either way, it works based on what we determine will be the best price for longevity and ultimately the best cost of the project. Next slide, please. At the end of the second year, we get to the third story, which meets the ISO minimum height requirement as the city develops. height requirement as the city develops.